Good evening, it is Monday, June 2nd. It's 5:18, we're at the Bennington Town Hall Conference Room. Bennington Select Board meeting regarding water budgets. First thing on the agenda is the water and sewer budget work session. Stuart, you want to start us off?
Sure. Both the Water Fund and Sewer Fund this year have fallen back more into line with what we've seen in the past. Water Fund has a projected increase of 3.1%. Sewer Fund, I think it's 1.4%. But ultimately, after we've reviewed the revenues, these budgets as projected would result in no increase in either the water or sewer rates.
That bears repeating, I think.
No increase in water rates or sewer rates. But there are also budgets that continue the work we've been doing on North Side Drive, but not a lot else. We've now lined out the projects over the next three to four years. If everything goes well with the bond issue, we'll move every year with a project in the range of $300,000 plus or minus. And that will carry us right into the construction project and ultimately when the payments begin in 2018. So we're looking pretty good. There is, and it's not presented here as part of the budgets, but we've got a projection as part of our public hearing next week on the water bond, which will show very, very minor increases in the Water Fund as we move through the next four fiscal years. Good news. And so now I open it to questions. I think Terry's made a, he's got major projects.
We had quite an overview of some of the things that we accomplished during this fiscal year '14. Things that we had budgeted for and what we completed and what we hadn't. Bull's Brook probably couldn't self-explain it though, even.
Jim, do you have anything specific or you want to?
Not at this point, I'm getting away.
Tom?
Just a couple of questions. The water bonds got, there are three that are presently underway. And one, the Ryder Springs, got one payment left.
Yes.
And then what is the installation for the filtration plant in the Bowles Brook? That's a $700 investment.
We're in the 10th year on Bowles Brook and the filtration plant.
It's got to be a filtration plant.
Yeah, we're about halfway through.
Halfway through. And the... Those, I think those are the only bonds, right?
Those are it.
Yeah. The only other question I had was the electric. That seemed to be an item that, how is that being addressed in those ingredients? Savings is some effort to...
Are you, were you in the Water Fund?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we, if you, when you were down the board, when we put in a a unit in line that was projected to save us a substantial amount of money. And this is the hydro project. Unfortunately, and we're still having problems, I believe, with the siltation and things like that.
Some way, yes.
It, because of the water coming into the plant, we're not able to remove all of the sediment through our filtering systems. So the hydro unit has to be shut down periodically because it clogs. So it hasn't generated the savings that we had hoped. And I think we were projecting initially that we would generate almost $30,000 in electrical savings with this unit. It's not turned out to be that way. And that's simply because it can't be used at its full capacity all the time.
Was that a big investment?
It was not a big investment.
We cut like an $80,000 grant, and which is about half. But one of the things too, as we moved through the permitting process, we realized that the unit that we had originally proposed to put in was going to be much more expensive. And one of the things that unit did, it allowed for a wide range of flows through the unit and kind of, if you want to say, compensated for that. And the unit we ended up putting in, just because the costs kept flowing up and up and up as we started putting this together, was an off-the-shelf unit. So if you run 2,000 gallons a minute, you get 10 kilowatts. If you run 1,000 gallons a minute, you get 5 kilowatts. Whereas the other unit was able to compensate for flow for a certain percentage to maintain a higher output from the generator itself. So I think we realized in that first year that we weren't going to get the paint back as quickly as what we had originally anticipated. Then along came Irene. And now every time we have even a not real harsh rainfall or a thaw process in the spring, the banks are so badly eroded and they haven't recovered yet that the river basically stills to the point where we have shut the fair break down for two or three days. And then we have to wait until the communities come down to a certain level in order to put the unit online. Otherwise, we put it online, two hours later, it needs to be cleaned. It's about an hour-long process. So we try to think of running as much as possible. But the problems in the river continue to persist and give us a little hang in there.
Is that something we should be looking at? Because it sounds like it's labor and equipment that can be less effective responses.
It's so hard for us to do anything about the stream bank erosion.
Is this unusual, this stream bank erosion?
Not for that, not for the stream, not for, this is City Stream or Bowles Brook. The stream acts very similar to the Boran Bridge. So it's mostly glacial tilt on the banks. And anytime you get a heavy rain or a heavy flow or heavy snow melt in the spring.
So it's not related to Irene?
Well, yes, the vegetation was stripped off.
Right, right. Even all the small tributaries are still kind of healing up from that whole process.
If you go stand on the Long Trail Bridge, you can see how much fell off in, you know, those banks. And those banks are just exposed soil now.
Yeah.
So when you get a downpour, that just muddies the river.
Right, very.
What could we do to ameliorate that insofar as, you know, I mean, doing plantings, grass or anything? Would that be wise to do something like that? Just let it?
We don't, we don't control those riverbanks. We don't control the land around them.
Yeah, it's all upstream from Bennington, so.
Right, natural forest laidness in it.
So, Tom, I don't think, I don't think there's anything we can do that's really, I think it's it's going to have to take time for this process to, for the streams anyway, to heal. And then we should, we should get better use. But as Terry said, you know, we had to downsize the project. And so we didn't see the savings we thought we were going to see. But I think the budget itself, if you look at the history, we're relatively constant at a higher cost than you'd like to be. We're relative to.
That's rates.
Yeah. I mean, hopefully in the next few years, the banks will grow up and things will heal themselves.
Yes.
And we're starting to see that in the flats a little bit.
Yeah.
You know.
For those of us that hadn't been on the board in the past, when was the past you said? The rates, was that three or four years of increases?
We had four years of increases in the range of 11 to 15%. And as we've talked about before, that was really to try to get our depreciation up where it should be.
Over there.
And up until, up until that time, we've been relatively constant.
Thank you.
Our rates have generally been in the range of cost inflation.
Okay. I really appreciate the fact that we're doing it according to the book now.
I think, you know, also in the past, enlightened in the fact, trying to keep our rates now, we were not able to put anything into reserve. So if we had a catastrophic failure that we didn't plan or something ran over, we just kept pulling out the reserve and pulling out the reserve. And the board about five years ago said, look, let's get out of plan. When we get to the rates to a level where we can continue to fund these projects and still have a little bit of foot is lying for that rating again. We finally managed to get there.
I've got some questions for Terry with respect to the overall condition of our sewer pipes and the intrusion of root systems into them.
Sewer pipes?
Yeah.
I mean, our system isn't in bad shape, but I would say probably 85% is quentile, which is, for the most part, starting to really outlive its usefulness. When the ground shifts, when the frost, most of the stuff was put in early 1900s, mid-1900s.
Well, I've got, the question why I bring this up is it's something that I saw online. And it's a technology that, it's like this reverse balloon process that is fed down into sewer systems. And it's made of a composite material that is hardened by heat.
Yeah.
And every year where.
We've used it.
Oh, you have?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, good.
We've been using that for 20 years.
Yeah.
Now for a slip line. Yes, matter of fact, we had a serious problem area of Route 9 in West Main Street, up near where the bypass was. And we knew the bypass was coming at some point. We did that as a sample cost savings from what would have cost the day in and the day out placed it on that line. It held up for, I think, almost 40 years till the bypass came through. So we've had really good luck with, one of the products we've used is called in safety form. And it rolls in as a resin. And they seem like a balloon or a bullet bag. And it cures right in place.
Yeah, amazing stuff.
That along with we've been able to in some better section areas is actually push a slightly smaller size PVC lagging. They call that slip lagging. Yes, we're very well aware of it. We haven't done a lot of it.
I figure you were.
Because of the cost, but in those areas where.
It's got to be more cost-effective than digging it up.
Oh, it's way more cost-effective. You know, if you've got an area that is either high traffic or has a lot of utilities, that's definitely the way to go, definitely.
Thank you.
Sharon?
No. I mean, it looks like a pretty good budget. One of the better ones we've seen for a while.
Easier ones, though.
Do you, do you have any FY15 projects that you can highlight?
Yeah.
That you can highlight for this budget?
For the coming year?
Yeah.
Well, I think more new water is going to be the $400,000 project for North Side Drive. On the wastewater side, we're going to be purchasing a truck actually in water and wastewater in the FY15 budget. We're going, uh, we have the waters in here.
Well, I think on the first page, Sharon, of the presentation, you talk about a new service truck for the Water Fund at $35,000.
Right.
A new roof hatch for the water filtration plant at $9,300. And Terry, you can explain this. What does a streaming current meter?
A streaming current meter is a meter that it takes the electrical charge in the water and measures it. And by doing so, the particles in the water carry a charge. So when the water gets dirtier, the electrical charge gets greater. It measures that electrical charge. It automatically feeds polymer into the system, which allows us to, it's like a glue kind of a material. It allows us to bunch that up and filter it out easier. We used to just go off, we didn't need the manual thinning. And about, I mean, 10 or 12 years ago, we went to this streaming current unit. And what it does, again, it measures the current and adjusts the addition of the polymer dose automatically so that it doesn't get kind of run away from us or it doesn't, you know, overdose. Because either one of those situations will create a problem downstream for it. So we replaced one unit this year. We're replacing the second next year.
So those are the major, four major items that are purchases. In the Sewer Fund, we're also looking at a new pickup truck. And that's to replace a 2002 vehicle. And we're going to do some slip lining in various locations that have been identified as high inflow areas. And that cost is estimated at $50,000 for this year. And then we are rebuilding the pump station, or actually, we're installing a new pump station on Cory Lane in Shafter. And that's to replace one that was built.
And Shafter is going to fund that?
No, we're funding it as part of our sewer system. This was a, this was a development that was allowed to tie in. It's just over the line from North Bennington. It was allowed to tie in back in, God, I have to be back in the 70s, late 70s, 80s.
I think in play in that key and then agreed it.
Yeah.
Does Shafter kick in anything?
No, the people pay, the people who use it pay.
So it's servicing customers at ours better and Shafter?
But that is, that has created some issues for us. And as you know, Shafter has approached us various times historically to try to see about tying more of their properties, town properties, into the municipal sewer. And we are now looking at that and saying, look, if you're going to do that, you need to create a sewer district. You need to bill your customers, you need to manage your customers, you need to manage the lines. We'll ask you to pay upfront for an allocation on an annual basis. The rest is yours. Because it's very hard for us to move into Shafter and propose to dig up some of these sewer lines if they didn't pay their bill.
Collection can be difficult. Same with North Bennington, they have the water, we have the sewer. And what we have to do on a number of occasions, we're actually going and putting insertion valve in lobby. And saying, look, you can't just get away with it and do whatever.
We haven't had to dig one yet. When our guys.
We showed the shovel.
Oh, yeah.
We showed, we marked it.
Check what comes out, yeah.
They come right down.
So this, the improvement in Shafter, is that with any of this in mind? Or is that simply a replacement of what we've got now?
That's, that's something that, yeah, it's a replacement of what we've. The town took over those mains and that pump station back. Ed Lamb was the manager that hired me, so you can tell us a long back ago. And so we are, in a sense, stuck with this particular system and this part of the system. And so we have been maintaining it and taking care of it over the years.
And the reason for this is two-fold. One is that the system is old. And it really is not designed to be maintained safely. There's no entrance, entrance.
I mean, there's not.
The pumps serve in behind, you know.
It's obsolete designs.
It's, it's 30, 35 years old. And it really, we're having a difficult time finding parts for replacement, that kind of thing.
But we're not building any expansion infrastructure? Is this simply maintaining?
No, and we, and, you know, we've basically told the folks in Shafter that if there is any expansion, they have to take that next step. And then we would, we would essentially, I think, gift this back to them once they had a sewer district in place.
And then just charge them for the processing?
Yeah, simply allocate based on an estimated flow.
Right.
And they would pay us annually. And then they would go about collecting whatever monies they need to run the sewer.
What does that phrase sewer district mean?
Well, the sewer district is generally formed, it becomes a municipality. Fire districts can be sewer districts. It's very similar to the rural fire district. You form a governing body. It could be the Select Board of the town of Shafter, for instance. And you create a budget. You create, you have the ability to borrow, bond, all of those things. But it's a formal process that would happen.
It's charter.
To do that. It doesn't require a charter necessarily. The statutes, statutes provide for those kinds of things. You can have a water district, a sewer district. You can create a governing body to run a system. I think Ponnell has a water district that the town has been looking at taking over. Because it does serve the whole community. It was a very close-knit part of their, their community. But they have all the authority of municipality.
Before we pass on to Mike, I just have one other question. On the wastewater treatment plant, it's getting on well along. It's, yeah, it's useful. Is this part of the reserve consideration? I know it's a big number, so we can't reserve it. Is that, is that, what are we thinking about?
What we've been trying to do, last year, we began to look at those parts of the upgrade that we can break out and handle within a reasonable amount of money. And we last, we did some, we purchased what they call a muffin monster. So we created some redundancy, we now have two units. So if one comes offline, we've got to put the other one back on.
The main stream pump station has just started. We take a look at those maybe $80,000 to $120,000 project that we can plug in and bite off a little at a time. But as I noted in my, in my wastewater handout, we're entering our 31st year. And although I think our operators have done a magnificent job, you know, really doing the preventative maintenance. The board has been great about allowing us to purchase and upgrade on an annual basis. But the system's getting a little old, it's getting a little tired. And one of our major components, the rotating biological contactor, which is a major part of our processing, there were 32 units. If you replace the units in, as a whole, like ones and twos and threes and fours and eens, they can be as much as 125,000, I mean, 225,000 a unit. But if we do all 32 at one time, that price per unit dropped significantly to around about 135,000. And part of that is due to the mobilization of all the heavy lifting equipment, the sediment place. Right now, we're operating on 24 units and still being well within our discharge permitting. And I, and I expect that with the units we have there, we may be able to salvage six or eight of them. So if we were looking at totally replacing 24, we may be able to salvage enough out of the other 32. But we've replaced all the drive units, at least one. Some are going for the second time. But now the, the infrastructure on these 22-foot-long unit is starting to wear and come apart. And once that happens, we tried to take them apart and do some maintenance on our own. And that was kind of the Achilles heel with these units at that time. Even though they were pretty much stainless steel, a lot of the bolts and the connecting pieces have begun to rot and create some problems. So that's going to be a big fight. We have some molecular issues. We really want to update the system to have SCADA, which is a supervised rate control and data acquisition that we installed at the water filtration plant. It allows operators to pop it up online, take a look, make adjustments. Really a much better way to manage the entire system. Trouble shooting problems, that's extra complication. The initial preliminary design costs were somewhere in the order of 17 million. But we're seeing just at what we're doing at our level with our pump stations and things, by doing the administrative work and doing the engineering locally, with a lot of this, we can do it perhaps at the cost of what it's been estimated as an overall project. The main stream pump station was estimated $142,000. It was being built at $74,000. So with our local design and our oversight, we can cut those costs substantially. How long we can put out some of those major units that we are taking a little deal in with locally or in-house, I'm not really sure. But that's a conversation that we really need to be having. I'm thinking that maybe within the next five years, we're going to have to look for a bond or look for some major upgrades that are feasible.
If there's, there's no reasonable concern about a catastrophic failure that would put us behind the eight ball, that we wouldn't have the ability to plan for that major project?
I don't think we have to plan. There, I mean, the.
As far as structures and, I think the RBCs is the big, the big item here. And even if we were to just go in and bite off the RBCs, we're constantly making upgrades. We're changing all the flights and chains and motors and drives and things, you know, old. We've been able to update, as you'll see in the little write-up that I did. We've been working very closely with efficiency providers. We did $13,000 worth of upgrades last year, which were all fully covered by grant. We have two more projects this year that we're looking at in our current fiscal year 15 budget, which will be fully reimbursable. And then, you know, the cost savings from then on in is, is, you know, all profit for us, basically. So we're looking at those smaller items, 20, 30, 20, and then into more than 70 or 80, like the pump station that we can bite off on an annual basis. Trying to knock that number down to something that's a lot more manageable.
And the other major piece of the plant that really is showing its age is the, actually, the electrical panel that operates the plant. I mean, the plant is practically self-automated. But that panel is, was 1983 what was installed. And things.
It'd be electrical in this scheme or.
Things have changed dramatically in that field. There are much more efficient ways to do things and so. But I can tell you, and I mirror what Terry says about the operators out there. That plant has continued to receive an excellent rating on an annual basis from the state of Vermont. So we're meeting the needs of the permanent and certainly exceeding them in the cases.
Well, I think the other thing to that rating is what we're doing right here is that when inspectors come in and see a very new pump, which we did two primary pumps here, you know, they see there's not slight element of floor, there's not. And, you know, along with the fact that we're meeting our criterias in our permit, they see it ongoing processing or upgrades and more than just general maintenance, like greasing and painting and that kind of thing. We've put a lot of money into this system down there. As Stuart just mentioned, we bought a muffin monster about 10 years ago. We rebuilt it once, and when it went down the second time, it looked like it needed major, major work. So we budgeted, we purchased a new one. But then we were able to send the other one back over another fiscal year and have it rebuilt. So now we have some redundancy. They look at those kind of things, they, what happens when you go offline here? Oh, we have another one in the closet. It may not be brand new, but it will buy us some time and that kind of thing.
What's a muffin monster again?
It's a grinder that's the headworks of the plant. So anything that comes in runs through this grinder before it goes into process. So it's like a giant chiller bar rack kind of thing that, I mean, you won't believe some of the things that arrive here, so, you know.
It's not just muffins.
This is right. It's, you know.
Kind of like Cookie Monster, except on a bigger level.
So, yes. So, yes.
Michael, do you have any?
Just a, just a small question on the top of page three under the filtration area. Just the turbidity, turbidity meter service. Are these meters that are set into the plant or how do they work?
Page three.
Second line in.
Yep. What this represents here is that there's a fairly major increase in its light item this year. One of the things that we've done here, we've hit our five-year period where a lot of our instrumentation, like our community meters, which measure the humidity, our coordination monitoring units, our, all of our processes have reached a five-year certification process. And at this point, just to recertify the equipment that needs to be done by our permit operator and the equipment manufacturer recommendation was going to be almost thirteen thousand dollars.
Sure.
Right? So HAF offered us a complete, a two-year, no, a quarterly site visit. We were doing twice a year. A quarterly site visit for eighteen thousand with all the upgrades. And also, they could come today and replace something and we might have a problem when the weeks down the line, they come back at no cost.
It's a good deal.
So it's a, it's a service contract, but it's also a full warranty of not only what they're replacing in the unit, but the unit itself. And we really felt for the additional five thousand dollars that because everything is approaching six and seven years, that this would be a good time to maybe get involved in that, have the quarterly updates, have them supply all the equipment that we would normally supply and then have them come twice a year to do that installation.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Just, just to clarify, though, those turbidity meters, though, are not, they're not an inline meter, or are they?
They are.
They are an inline meter, but they, they, they're standalone. You can pull them out, replace them.
Yes, they are.
That was one of your questions.
That's it.
And there's like thirteen of them. There's four in the inlet and the front door outlet into the five seventh stage.
Does anyone else have any specific criteria?
Just one, the capital asset schedule. Do we have that? Is that here?
I think that's coming to you with the rates.
Okay.
Correct, Melissa? Because that was part of your, your rate presentation.
It was.
Yeah. Yeah.
Michelle, she told me to ask.
She did, huh? But it's going to line out those major projects that we've talked about. You'll see those on a different, a separate schedule.
All right. Anything else? Any other questions? I think it's good work.
Yeah.
As usual, Terry and Melissa and everyone involved in getting this depreciation thing under wraps. And I'd like to thank previous boards as well as the taxpayers for biting that off for the last few years along with us and getting this to where it needs to be, so.
And your staff, I mean.
Yeah, staff's done an excellent job of optimizing the money they've, they've gotten to, so. So we need a motion on this budget?
If, if you were prepared to adopt both the Water Fund and Sewer Fund budgets, I'd love to have a motion with that. And then we would plan to set the rates at the public meeting.
Based on the budget.
I believe that we adopt the Water and the Sewer Fund budgets.
Can that be one motion?
It can be.
I'll second that.
You have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, that is unanimous.
Great, thank you. I do have just this liquor license to circulate. Sharon has explained to us all it's a new proprietor.
Just saying, I don't know.
I know. And I appreciate it.
Some of us knows these things.
Yes, right, yeah, there's only one signature page these days.
Sorry, use this, put it in here.
Our media are the only citizens here. Do any citizens have anything they wanted to say? Need to make sure.
And we do need just a brief executive session to talk about the memorandum that I had in your packet.
Okay. I need a motion to go into executive contract in a moment.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Who seconded it?
Mike, Mike seconded it. James got the motion. Or either way.
Yeah.
So was that five?
Can I get a copy of that presentation?
So you're done.